Steve, thanks. I appreciate that.
Terrific. Steve, we do have a quorum?
We do have a quorum.
Any public comment? Do we have any public online today?
Nobody contacted us to try and get on.
Of course, you didn't send them that new link either, so.
Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't let them on, actually. We would just answer their questions during, during the meeting. So we don't want any problems.
Very good. Everybody did get a copy of the minutes from our previous meeting. Are there any additions, corrections?
Move to accept.
Second.
Second?
I'll second it, huh?
Thank you, John. All in favor?
Aye.
Our minutes are approved. Stevie, let's run down our bills real quick, if you would.
Nothing out of the ordinary. Square and times citizens' voice for our long-range plan meeting and our hearings. Luzon County, two more invoices on the camp plan, long-range plan, and our SAPA invoice. Everything is basically normal. And we'll be wrapping up SAPA, so that will be going away. And the long-range plan's been adopted, so that should be finishing up. And the camp plan, we're hopefully going to get this done by April.
Good. Anybody have any questions on any of the bills? Hearing none, entertain a motion to approve?
I'll make, okay, Cindy, I'll second it, Cindy.
Okay.
Cindy, John, second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. All right. Communications?
One application, or excuse me, one communication was just Valerie Kaplan sent four projects for environmental coordination. They gave the Fonzie's for those. There's not a problem with that. And one letter for local share count for the Abington area recreation board. And one for a DCR C2P2 grant. So nothing out of the ordinary there.
Anybody have any questions on our communications? Let's move on to old business. Transportation planning, please.
Okay, we have a new procedure now with PennDOT, which has worked out rather well for us. Before we send the final invoice, we've been sending it to their financial people. They review it and make any comments, or we make any corrections that might need to be made to get it through the process a lot quicker. So we've undertaken that for the last three or four invoices, and they've turned around within like 30 days. Also, Tina and I have been attending, and we just got off one of the conference WebEx's on environmental justice and Title VI with the new regulations that the feds have put out, and the state, we're getting training. Actually, Will Clark from York County is running it. They did a major rewrite of their Title VI and EJ program. And they've been holding these seminars. We had two so far. There'll be three more for the whole state, for all the MPOs. So one of the questions that came up today was how we're going to incorporate the census data, since the census data is want to be probably a year behind in getting to us. We have to do our tip updates starting late summer, early fall of this year. So that's a major thing that we're going to wait for federal highways to give us some guidance on. Also, we had our MPO meeting and our public hearing. So as I mentioned, we adopted the long-range plan. And along with that, there are a number of other items that need to be adopted, air quality, performance measures, and a whole bunch of other documents. We're also working with with NEPA, Lehigh Valley Transit, Reading Area Transit, and their acronym is RATS, so that's Lebanon County MPO for the freight plan. It's moving along. We had discussion, we had another meeting, and the discussion with PennDOT on funding. PennDOT is willing to help us with supplemental funding. We just have to flesh out some more information for them and see how we're going to divide up the funding, or excuse me, the participation. For our MPO, for Lackawanna Luzon County, we're probably looking at about 10 grand, somewhere in that range. And that will come out of our UPWPR normal budget. So we're not going to really have to come up with any additional funding. If we tried to do a freight plan on our own, we'd probably be looking at a quarter of a million dollars.
Steve, is there a consultant assigned to this project or no?
That's one of the discussions we've been looking at, John, whether or not we're going to try and tag on to one of the open contracts that PennDOT has.
Okay.
Right now, we look, probably want to put together an RFQRFP and put it out on the road because we're basically talking about the northeastern corner of the state, so it's going to be a rather large project.
Okay.
Data-intensive.
Very good. Thank you.
We haven't gotten to that point yet. Again, we're in discussions with PennDOT on whether or not we could tag on to one of their open contracts or go the RFP RFQ route. And right now, the primary or the majority opinion is going RFQRFP.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Stephen transportation? Let's move on to SAPA.
Okay, again, at the February meeting, we did the downtown bike study, was adopted by the MPO. And we'll be looking at utilizing that in the update of the tip. And also in putting together any programs or projects to come up through the PennDOT connects planning 360 process. And we've been asked by the consultants with Luzon County to present at the Pennsylvania Trails Symposium in the fall for the Commonwealth. And so we're going to look at that. The Symposium is in September. So we're not sure how I'm going to handle it at this point, but we are going to participate in it.
Great.
Oh, just now the forester isn't there.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand that.
I, that wasn't us. I don't know where that came from.
It was, yeah.
Oh, okay. Good. Any questions on our bike study? Let's move on to SAPA. Mayor?
Okay, yep, like Cindy and I were talking, we have a virtual public forum scheduled for Tuesday, the 16th, from four to five. We're going to do a presentation. Ted from DCED is going to start off, and then I'm going to talk about the county's involvement. And then Carolyn from EPD is going to kind of go through all the different, the transects and explain how we put the ordinance together. We are going to have a representative from all nine municipalities on to make a statement and then to take some general questions. Again, we're trying to make sure that we're aware that anything specific, they need to contact the local municipality for that. The public hearings are set for April and one in May. And I'm working on the legal ads right now. We'll have to get those in the paper next week for the seven municipalities that are going to take advantage of the county paying for the advertising. Clark Screen's already done, waiver lease a month behind, so they're going to pay for their portion as well. So, you know, they're all online. We're in the process of reviewing them all. Moving along. I'm happy. I'm happy.
Can it all wrapped up by the summer?
I hope we have it wrapped up on May 10th, because that'll be the last adoption. And then we'll submit our final reimbursement to DCED, and it should be done by June 30th.
How many years?
This portion, 2017.
Yeah, the whole project did 12 years.
2006.
But it is.
By the time the last municipality adopts, we'll have to update the plan.
It's still quite an accomplishment. Great job. Any questions on SAPA? If not, moving on. Real Service?
Okay, we did have a virtual.
This project goes even longer than SAPA.
Yes.
I had black hair when we started.
Yeah. You weren't even born.
We had a meeting on February 5th, again, virtual. We discussed some of the information that we were looking at to spend the remainder of the LSA funds. They have to be done by 2021. One of the ideas was to do a passenger study to see what the ridership would be. But everyone's kind of agreed that right now is not a good time to do a ridership study because of the COVID epidemic. For instance, New Jersey Transit's ridership is down 75%. So we wouldn't get good numbers right now. There's other things that we could spend the money on, upgrading the engineering, doing the 30% or 60% engineering. So those discussions started, and then we were thrown a little bit of a curveball when Bob Morgan left the congressman's office. He's been one of the prime movers on the committee. And we're just waiting for John Blake to take over so that we can brief him on the project and get everything back in order.
Well, I think, and John Blake has been involved for a long time. We actually had all our meetings when we were in person at his office. And Larry West was involved, and I know that it's a project that, you know, they're very, very interested in. So I don't think we're going to lose any steam on the project. I think we'll be able to pick up where we left off once we get going again.
Yeah. Good. Any questions on Real Service?
One of the things, or big things that came out of it, and I don't know if I mentioned this at last month's meeting, the New York delegation, including Senator Schumer, is now behind the project. They're looking at expanding service up to Albany and to Buffalo.
Wow.
And really, to Albany, the only way feasible to do it is through Scranton. So we're looking at working with the New York delegation now, which also puts a little bit of a, not a delay, but a logistical thing, because we're going to be dealing with three states now. But that is good news, because the southern tier delegation and both Schumer and, I can't remember the woman's name, the senator from New York right now, they are supporting the project.
Dave, was there any money included in the stimulus package for?
Not in the stimulus package, but now that we've got the congressman on the appropriations committee, and we have Secretary Schumer, who's high-ranking on the Democratic side in the Senate.
We're hopeful.
We've, we've got a lot of support behind it. So this will be one of those projects that, once the transportation stimulus bill gets passed, which hopefully will be sooner rather than later. I know it was President Biden's, one of his primary things. We can get moving. And again, this is a project that's almost basically shovel-ready.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
The infrastructure bill will be forthcoming, and we'll find out how much support we really do get for this project.
Right.
Good, good.
One good thing about the infrastructure bill, it's going to be immense. It's going to be even bigger, I think, than the just this COVID bill that just passed. It's going to be huge.
Yeah.
That's if they can.
And it's going to be not only highways, bridges, but it's going to include railroads, infrastructure, water, you know, everything. Like, it's going to have a power, it's going to have a big effect. It's going to be a boom.
Let's hope so.
Yep, per.
Much needed.
Hazard mitigation. Gee, we got approval.
We did. We got our approval letter from FEMA.
Wow.
Approval pending adoption is what it's called. So it will, the resolution will be on for the next commissioners' meeting, which is the first week in April. And when they sign off, then we send out the letters to all the municipalities for them to adopt as well, so.
Excellent.
And hopefully, we had an issue with the state trying to deposit our reimbursement. Apparently, the bank closed the account because it was open for over a year with no deposit. Hopefully, that was resolved. They haven't gotten any emails that it didn't go through this time, so.
Okay.
So we're pretty much wrapping up.
I think the bank would give a notification. We are closing your account at such and such a day, you know, a little notice, you know?
Yeah. They usually do. I'm surprised.
Yeah, I thought that they should, but.
Well, there's so many accounts that the county has, it probably just slipped through the cracks. Working from home and everything.
Yeah, and all of the notifications go to the treasurer's office, so we may not have seen it.
That's true.
Once the county adopts the hazard mitigation plan, you're going to send out a notice to all the communities, and they have to adapt that. Do they have a certain time period?
I think it's two years, but hopefully they do it within a few months.
Two years?
I believe so.
That's a long time.
I'm not going to tell them that.
Yeah, yeah, because you don't want to track it that long, gee.
Then we're going to be starting over with the next.
Exactly, yeah.
Well, tell them two months or something.
Yeah.
Mary Liz, what are, Mary Liz, what are the updates? Every five years?
Every five years, right.
So if you give them two, they could.
That's what I mean. At that point, you're thinking about reapplying for the next round.
Yeah, yeah. Give them 90 days and get it done.
Yep.
Good, good. Okay, great, great job. Chesapeake, no activity, huh? Nobody wants to.
I just got an email yesterday from Jerry Stiles. I guess they're going to be having a steering committee meeting within the next two weeks, so.
Yeah, he actually reached out to me and asked if Mary Liz and I would be on the steering committee. You know, kind of just to give some guidance and ensure that Lackawanna County is involved. I think it'll be a commitment of one to two meetings a month, so it's, you know, it's something I think is doable. And then we're, you know, we still have some overall input.
Right. And Nicole Shapiro from the environmental sustainability, Barb Givinoli's replacement. She's interested in this project too, so I just sent an email to Jerry telling him that she'd be willing to help out too, so.
Good.
Yeah.
So the Conservation District's going to take the lead on this?
They are. They've already hired a consultant, I believe.
Yeah, they hired the consultant, so that's good news. It's good.
Great, great. Any questions? Moving. Lackawanna Luzon Regional Top Plan?
Okay, we're moving along. We have to notify adjacent counties, local municipalities, the school districts on the 45-day comment period, so we're in the process of doing that. Once we get that 45-day comment period out of the way, we have to schedule a commissioner's public hearing and the meeting. So we're just working on that, on those logistics, but we're looking at sometime in April for adoption.
Good.
Excellent.
Good, good, good. That was a good presentation last month. Terrific. Any questions? Let's move on to our development reviews. Got a couple of those.
Okay, page eight, just we're talking about COVID. Highlands and Archbold, I got a phone call in the beginning of January from the developer wanting to know why his plan wasn't on our December agenda. I said we never received it. So they sent us a new plan. I got it in the beginning of February. And about three days or four days after I got the new plan, the old one showed up with the postmark of December 12th.
Yeah, the mail was screwed up.
It was only coming from Montrose.
Yeah, it was coming from Montrose.
Oh, my gosh.
And Vanling had actually sent us a packet of information for the hazard mitigation plan in mid-December, and we got it in mid-February.
Wow.
And they missed the, missed incorporating it into the plan.
Wow.
Because of that.
Are you still checking our, our box downstairs?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay. I'm going to jump off. It was good seeing everyone. If I can get back on, I'll be back.
Okay.
We might be done. Bruce, you're going to have to jump off too?
Chairman, I'm going to have to jump off. I only have one request. Steve, keep throwing your hair long. I want you to do an Edgar Winters.
Actually, Bruce, I was scheduled.
On your back, you know, and you'll be good.
He's just thrilled he still has hair. What are you talking about?
I had to cancel the appointment.
Thank you, Bruce. That was.
Thanks, Bruce. See you, Bruce.
Yep. All right, Stevie, continue. Sorry.
Okay, page 12, Mary Liz, Covington Township zoning map?
Yeah, we got a request for an amendment to the Covington Township zoning map. It's right at the intersection of I-380 and 307 at that interchange. They're looking to rezone, and it's probably about 80 acres in about two parcels of land from, it's currently C2 portion of it is R2. They want to rezone it to M1 for a distribution center. Um, the Covington Industrial Park, which is their current M1, is pretty much built out. There is maybe one vacant lot. Whether they're going to do this or not, I'm not sure yet. You know, it's questionable if it's spot zoning, because it is a large parcel. And there is a sawmill currently on site that has just shut down, so it's, their argument is it's kind of a manufacturing, going to manufacturing as well. So I mean, it's, it's, you know, it could be spot zoning, but actually, I think maybe not. And I just suggested traffic impact study and environmental study, because they're, they may need a light there, coming in and out of the 307, getting on 380.
And this is the area where the salt shed was.
Yes, right across the street.
Contamination.
Wouldn't this, I mean, I guess, under land development, that's where the traffic study would come in, Mary Liz, you know, like, once there was a specific project that they applied for their HOP or whatever, you know?
Right.
And, and even the environmental would come in then as a site specific. You agree, Dave? Dave Johns, I would think that's when they would come in.
I, I agree with that, John. Yes.
And then if they just gave them general information, because if they, you know.
No, you're right.
Decide whether they wanted to go through with the zoning change or not.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
How many acres is it, Mary Liz?
It's eight, it's about 84 or 85 total.
Yeah, that, that's not like where you're taking like an acre, you know, out of something. And it's, is it adjacent to another zone or is it separated?
No, it would be by itself. It would be adjacent to the C2 and the R2.
Okay.
And again, with the salt contamination in that area, it probably would never be developed as a residential zone.
Correct.
Okay. Good, good.
Okay, and right after that, page 13, 14, Mary Liz, Lands of Crager.
Yeah, and this was just a minor subdivision up in the Bell Mountain section of Dixon City. They're subdividing 14 acres into, actually, it's 202 acre tract into two building lots. One's just under five acres and the other's just under 10 acres. Really nothing wrong with it, except they're using a private easement to access, access the lots, which is, according to their ordinance, they have to have frontage on the public street. There is water service there, but, and they didn't provide the certification letter. And that's really it, other than the review fee, but we're, you know, we're not making a big deal out of that.
You see a lot of these anymore coming up in the reviews, where they're trying to use easements and access and covenants and all that stuff to get in. It really doesn't meet the gist of the ordinance, doesn't Mary Liz?
No, no. And actually, there is, this is an existing private driveway that kind of goes up to the top of the mountain.
Yeah.
No, but they're making, you know, they're creating a right-of-way or an easement, I believe, is what it is.
Is this off the Bell Mountain area where you would turn? It's, I think it's now a Meta Center. It used to be a McDonald's. Is that the road you're talking about?
Yeah, you go up there and you go to the right, and then it goes further up than to the top of the mountain. Yep.
In the easement, do they spell out the maintenance responsibilities?
Nope.
No.
Oh, that's, that's.
That's, that's bad, yeah.
Yeah.
Real bad.
Everybody just starts going, no, no, you're responsible for this. You're responsible.
Yeah, yeah.
Who's going to plow it, who's going to maintain it?
Right.
Right, okay.
Unless it's in the deeds, of which we, you know, we don't, we didn't see, but nothing on the plan.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions? Continue.
Okay, right after that, 15 and 16, Lands of Hammett up in Scott Township. This plan did not have the name of, or excuse me, the address of the owner, the developer, the subdivider. We really didn't have anybody to contact. Always a big, big problem. I was able to find the the engineer's address that was on the plan, so they're going to be the only ones to get a copy of this. But one of the things is they're going to, again, access the parcel from Ryan Lane, which is a private roadway that comes to a PennDOT highway. And they didn't make any notation on whether or not this has an HOP. If it doesn't, they would need an HOP. And there's, again, if not, they would need access to Layton Road, because the parcel actually has a lot of frontage along Layton Road. So either way, they have to make notation of an HOP, but if they don't have one for Ryan Lane, then they're going to need one for that, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Whoever owns, whoever owns Ryan Lane is responsible for that. So if they're not the owners, that could be an issue.
Yep.
And again, they didn't give me enough information on the plan to determine who's going to take care of it, how they're going to do the agreements. There was no easements or anything.
Okay.
Okay, on page 25, 26.
Steve, I'm actually, I'm surprised you actually gave them a conditional approval.
Well, I'm assuming that they have their own addresses and they know where they live, so that's the one big thing. And the other thing is with the roadway, they're not going to get an HOP. So if they don't get an HOP, they're not going to be able to develop it.
Good. Thanks.
$25, $26 Dollar General on Cedar Avenue in Scranton. This came in as a lot consolidation plan and as a land development plan. It's the intersection of Birch and Cedar, where Route 11 makes that, I guess, loop turn there. That was the old fire station, I think that was Engine 2. Then it became the tissue bank. They used that property for a while. So they're going to tear that building down and build a new Dollar General. Again, they didn't give a certification from the water company. Now, because they're tearing down one building and putting up another building with a different use, you got to assume that the water is going to be sufficient, but Act 247 requires it. They're looking to get a variance on parking spaces, and it'll have to go to the zoning hearing board, but they're providing 29. They need 30. A big deal on the variance, but actually, they could rearrange it slightly to get that 30th spot in there, and they wouldn't have to go for a variance. One of the things is this fronts or has access to Neptune Place, but they're not using that access at all. So if they made some changes, they could access Neptune Place and get another parking spot there. I don't know if there's a problem with using that alley or not. Their landscaping plan, they didn't provide enough interior landscaping, again, because of the configuration of the lot. We're not really concerned about it, but what we did mention is the part of the building that's going to front on Cedar Avenue, they have some low plantings, but they have no windows, so it's going to be basically a blank wall. You can't really regulate aesthetics, but we are recommending, because it is a prime corner in the city. It's a very well-used business district that they provide some kind of amenities, a window or something to make that look more of a storefront than a blank wall. Our REU fee wasn't calculated correctly. They did submit part of it, but not the whole thing.
From the city standpoint, we received the plans in. I had a conversation with my engineer. I think you know who that is, Cindy. And I left them in work, and Ryan brought them home, and Chris looked, we looked at them for, and he sent an email to the engineer, basically saying that this, that it's so incomplete that we're not even going to review it until we get a complete submission. There were no stormwater counts, erosion, sedimentation control plan. They had the note about an HOP on the drawing, but there was no confirmation that they have applied for an HOP. The stormwater was basically some kind of surface system that was draining into some rock drains, which in the city, I don't believe that's acceptable, but they're going to be involved with PAW on a stormwater connection, no matter what they do. So from our end, all that little stuff you see up in the left-hand corner is what we're looking at, and it's, it's lacking right now, so we're it's, we're not going to even entertain it until the submission is, is complete.
John, do you have any idea why they're not accessing Neptune Place?
Steve, we just, like I said, we got the plans in. I yanked out the lot consolidation plan, because that's what I review. I sent the other stuff up to my engineer, Chris, and he looked, took a quick look at it, and it's so incomplete that it's not even worth starting to review at this point in time, you know what I mean? So we'll get into it with Steve at a later date, you know?
Yeah, because they're. Yeah, cuz their access is off of Birch Street directly across from where the lower end of Cedar Avenue comes in. And.
Now, maybe if they had discussions, maybe that's where they wanted it, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
You know, rather than someplace in the yes turn. Cuz that would be, but whether that required, what's that gonna require? I I I don't know, so. I mean, the HOP's probably a tougher approval than getting through us, you know what I mean? Because a lot of this stuff is the same. You have to have the stormwater calculations approved, you know, if you're tying in anything, you know, so. They've got, and the engineer's out of selling's growth, so uh I don't know how much familiarity is with the site, you know, so.
Okay.
But the one thing I noticed, there was no stormwater calcs or E and S calcs or anything or an E and S plan or stormwater plan provided. There was details on the drawing, but they were very incomplete. So it's got a ways to go, people.
Yeah, even the uh the subdivision map, if you looked at it, it's all convoluted with the property lines. It's a very strange piece of land.
I wasn't even gonna take a look at that until we got more into the review, cuz I'm not gonna, you know, approve a block consolidation plan and then have the project not go forward. So once they get up on the engineering, we'll take a look at that. Uh, I don't know why these guys, Steve, they go to two sheets. They they make it like a, a, you know, an existing map and then a com, it's to me, it's a waste of paper because you gotta record the two sheets then. You have to record the whole land development plan. You should, uh, but I don't know. Guys make it harder on themselves than they should, you know?
And I didn't even mention in the review, cuz it's a little bit out of our purview, but the fire station may be a historic structure, so I don't know if there's gonna be any requirements, uh, extra requirements that the historic board might, um, you know, the city historic board might make them go through.
And you never know what's in those old buildings too. Is there asbestos? Is there anything in there that might have to be checked? But that's more of a building permit issue than a than a planning issue, you know?
Yeah.
John, did you ever deal with this firm before, Livick?
No. The developers are local. If you see the developers list on the plans, they're local, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
They might own the property and they're working with somebody probably to put the dollar, is it a dollar, a convenience store or Dollar General?
Dollar General.
Dollar General, yes, sir. You know, a lot of times these franchises have an engineer they work with, Steve. I I mean, Harry, you know what I mean?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They might have the northeast or half, the eastern half of Pennsylvania, like, say, Livick, they might have it for Dollar General, you know?
Yeah.
But we've done Dollar Generals. I mean, our, so I mean, I'm not saying they are, but maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, we've done, we've done a number of Dollar Generals. This is the first time we've seen this firm.
Okay.
But one of my guys said that they did, uh, one of the guys said they did see the name on some other plan somewhere, so, but anyway.
All right, let's continue.
I don't expect this one too soon.
Okay, finally, on page 27, 28, White Oak Estates in uh Roaring Brook. This originally came in as a 10-lot subdivision, where there were gonna be seven building lots and three lots were going to be subdivided, would not be conforming, then would be added to the adjacent parcels. Um, I had some questions on it because of the review fee and a couple other things, so I did contact the uh owner. And the owner actually happens to be the same as the firm that's developing the plan. And during our discussions, he said they were gonna send in revised plans where the three lots that were being subdivided to be added to the adjacent parcels were not gonna be subdivided that way, and he was gonna subdivide as building lots. Uh, I did get the revised plan, but overall, uh, we were recommending approval of the original plan. Um, so the approval for the revised plan would continue with some of these comments actually going away because of the adjacent parcels.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
One of the other things is uh Roaring Brook is one of those municipalities that requires plans to come directly from them to us. Um, the developer stated to me that he had verbal authorization from the township to submit it. So that's the other thing with the conditional approval.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Um, any other reviews to highlight?
That's it.
Anyone have any questions on any of the reviews? Hearing none, entertain a motion to uh prove the reviews are submitted?
So moved.
Moved by Rose, second by Jerry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved. Is there any other business to come before the commissioner's month?
Uh, Harry, just need a motion on the communications.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the communications.
Second.
Thank you, David. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved. Thank you very much. Uh, is there any other business?
I just wanna say, if anybody wants that link for the SAPA meeting, if you're interested in, you know, listening, just let me know, and I'll send you the link, or I'll have Joe send it to you.
Why don't you? Yeah.
Yeah, please.
Okay.
We're gonna get the right, we're gonna get the right link this time, right?
I hope so. Cindy should already have hers. I sent them out.
Yeah, I got it.
Hey, uh, Steve, I have a question. Have we received any inquiries regarding the proposed Jefferson Township development? When we were talking earlier about traffic impact studies, um, I'm reading that the increase in truck traffic in that area is gonna be pretty dramatic.
We have not gotten anything here officially.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, actually, the last uh review I was just talking about, White Oak Acres, uh, the person that is developing that lives right near that area, and he called me and asked, this is how the whole conversation started, if we had any information on it. I said, other than what's in the paper, we have not seen anything. Um, but yeah, I mean, I'm not sure if Golf Club Road could handle the truck traffic. It would definitely have to be upgraded. Uh, I mean, that that infrastructure is.
Right.
Totally inadequate. And then what would happen on 435 or traffic signals and things like that?
348.
You know, a developer coming in and saying, hey, I wanna change the zoning.
Right.
Based it on, uh, like we just talked about, environmental reviews and and um, you know, things like that. They've gotta come up with some explanations on why they wanna do it.
Yeah.
Because Jefferson does have a comprehensive plan. So they would be making a change to their comprehensive plan, and they have to develop the reasons why.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
And then, Rosemary, uh, any uh, like, if this, if if this became a land development submission, say the zoning went through, just say it does. Well, then that's when you would see uh under the HOP process, how that intersection would have to change and what, how many lanes would have to be, if any would have to be added to, what is it? Uh, what 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 what's what's the main, oh, 438, 3, 348?
48.
48.
Yeah, and then uh, you know, I don't how, whatever that little golf course road is, that that would probably have to be widened and with turning lanes and everything else, like whatever would happen. So, you know, that's where the, if it happens, then that's where you'll see what's gonna, the traffic is gonna require, how many, how much improvement.
Thanks, John.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Uh, I just wanted to uh let the board know that I received a call from the commissioner's office as far as reappointments on the board. And I guess you're up, Harry, Rosemary, and myself. So uh, I did express that I wanted to continue. I enjoy being on the board. And also, I'm sure Rosemary and you do too. So I didn't know if you received any notification from them.
Gary, I'm glad you brought it up. I did receive a call yesterday. And I I was really pleasantly surprised because I don't think I've ever received a phone call.
It's the new wave now.
Harry, do you receive a call?
No.
Not yet. She's trying to track you down.
You know what? They didn't have your number, Harry, so you may wanna contact them.
Geez, I'm in the phone book. I don't understand it.
Luckily, it's on books.
What what's a phone book?
Yeah.
That's the lot of landlines, you know?
They should, they should have the uh information, cuz we send everything up to them, including phone numbers and addresses.
Sounds good. I'm glad everybody wants to stay on.
But I I have to say, I'm impressed that the commissioner is making the calls herself, not having someone else handle the inquiry.
Yeah.
Um, so I was impressed.
Good.
Terrific.
And I know, I was talking to Brenda this morning. They are looking to re, to fill that vacancy. They have a few people from Carbondale and Felt Township that they're looking into.
Can we, can we submit a recommendation or?
Uh, the one you submitted is the one they're looking at.
Oh, great. Well, if he if he gets appointed, I think everyone will enjoy working with him. He's a true professional.
He's our first choice.
Good.
Yeah.
Um, I, I just wanna say that, you know, let everybody know that um I'm kind of honored John Blake's office nominated me to be on the state planning board. Um, the paperwork has all been sent to the governor's office, and I'm, I guess I need Senate confirmation of some sorts or nomination, so um I haven't heard anything official yet, but I have been nominated.
That's fantastic. Congratulations.
Fantastic.
I don't think we've had anybody on the planning board from our region in.
Yeah, no, Ellen, Ellen was on, yeah. She was in Luzerne County. Yeah.
Yeah, that's a while ago.
Yeah, yeah, so, so we'll see if it's approved.
I mean.
There's a lot of positive energy.
Yeah.
Cindy, your news, um, the the infrastructure discussion, the railroad.
Yeah.
Um, what's happening in DC, all good.
Yep.
Promising.
That was very, I was very pleased too. Like, a few years ago, Senator Blake advanced my name for the Transportation Advisory Committee, which is recommending to the uh the transportation, uh, the main, the council or whatever it is, the thing, so.
Yeah.
He he's trying to get people from the Northeast, like, out into the state, and it's been a wonderful experience for me. The, you know, I mean.
Good, good.
We meet four, four times a year and uh.
Yeah.
It's been virtual, but a lot of inside stuff, and it's it's really nice to be a part of it, you know? The more you participate, you know, it it, you get, you you make the Northeast known across the state.
Absolutely, yeah, for sure. Good.
Congratulations. That's a great honor.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other good news?
I just have a few other things just to bring the board up to speed. Um, the MPO has started the process of revising our bylaws. Um, you remember, we've had that discussion for a number of years, Harry and John. Um, we're looking at, right now, we have two.
Yep.
We have the coordinating committee, which is the governing body, and a technical committee. I call it the people that roll up their sleeves and do the work. Um, but basically, both committees have the same members on them. So we're looking at a combination of those members and then updating the organizational structure of the bylaws because the MPO was originally established in 1964, and nothing's been updated over the years.
Wow.
Basically, four amendments. Um, so we're looking at doing a total rewrite on that. And yesterday, uh, Brenda and I were involved with uh two virtual meetings, one on upgrades to Main Avenue. Uh, the uh system manager, Blakely Borough, uh, Mr. Payon brought up a question about funding um because the section in Blakely by Lincoln Street, and then again, up in the Keystone Avenue, Main Street area is really in bad shape. Um, we explained to him that all of the funding over the last three or four years, which comes out of the, what we call the K route funding, uh, with PennDOT, has been devoted for uh Boulevard Avenue, Main Street, and Dundaff and Main and Dixon. Uh, originally, we were looking at that as being about a 1, 1.2 million dollar project. Uh, because of some of the issues, it's getting closer to 1 and 1/2 million. And we get about $400,000 a year for the K route funding, so that's tied it up. But the next section that would be done would be Main Avenue from uh basically the anchor up to Deckers Bridge um on in Pepto and Blakely. Um, but one of the issues, and probably don't realize it, that's the old Providence Turnpike. You dig down about eight or nine inches, and you're on brick.
Ah, huh.
And so that's gonna take a total rebuild.
Wow.
Everything out, right down, getting rid of the brick, putting in a subbase and and building it back up. We're looking at over 2 and 1/2 million dollars.
Whoa, wow.
So that's, that's what we're looking for. Um, uh, Representative Mullins was on the call and a couple other people. So hopefully, we can get something either through the infrastructure bill or through Harrisburg. Also, right after that, we had another call with the Chamber of Commerce on extending Valley View Drive uh to get it to Archbald. Right now, that ends in uh Archbald, but the only access is through Jessup. Uh, they're looking at three alternatives. One would be to punch the road through to Salem Road and Archbald. That road would require crossing, uh, oh, jeez, I forget the creek now. Uh, there's a creek in Archbald. I can't remember.
Yeah, I know, I know what you mean.
Senior, senior moment. But that would probably be a 7 to 8 million dollar bridge crossing that creek, not to mention all the environment, environmental problems. Is when we did the extension of Valley View across Grassy Island Creek and Jessup, uh, we had very, a lot of environmental issues there. So that would be similar. So that's the most expensive project. The other two alternatives, there's an existing underpass under US 6, but it's eight inches too narrow for two-way traffic. So they're looking at using that and putting up a traffic signal and doing alternate traffic under that. Or the third alternative is to push a bridge underneath the highway to get two-way traffic. They just sent me the reports. They're about 200 pages. I haven't even got, I just printed it out this morning, but we're gonna take a look at that. So those are two more major projects for um the infrastructure.
Well, interesting.
And the final issue, uh, and you probably saw it in the paper this morning on the tolling of the bridges. Um, we're not involved because the bridges are not in Lockawanna County. They would affect us both on the north and the south um with the bridge in Susquehanna County over the river there, over to Susquehanna River, and then also the two bridges in Luzerne County. And the two bridges in Luzerne County were still part of the MPO. Um, the presentation from PennDOT, we attended three of them. Um, one by the district, one by central office, and then one to um inform the legislators about what was going to be proposed. The main issue is PennDOT is probably going to be under this year by about 850 million dollars.
I read that.
Um, the nine bridges are somewhere in the neighborhood of 1.6 billion dollars.
Yeah, I will call you, Kenny. Sorry.
What we're talking about there, uh, can you sign the paper today where your legislature is coming out against tolling the bridges? But they're not providing alternative revenue to uh fix them.
Hmm.
So those are the issues that are coming up, and just wanna make everybody aware of them.
Interesting. Thanks, Steve. Anybody have any questions? No public comments? How about the entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
Second, Rose. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, thank you, everybody, for taking time out of your busy.
Aye.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Have a good one.